Okay, you're live.
Good evening. I want to extend a warm welcome to all the parents and carers of year 10 and 12, to our first ever town hall. And I've got the honour of leading it this evening. So I'm going to talk to you for about fifteen, twenty minutes or so, and then I'll give ample opportunity for questions to be asked from parents. You should hopefully have all had the information pack. If you haven't had the information packed, then it's on our Return to School Year 10 and 12 page on the website. So I'm not about to go through every specific point this evening, but I'm going to give a kind of broad overview and some key bits of information for you. I've got Mr Jones, who's moderating the questions for me, and you'll be able to type them in. Now, depending on what device you're using, it may look slightly different, but there's a speech bubble. So look for a speech bubble on your page as I present, and you'll be able to type in any questions there. Having now done this several times with staff, we've found it's often better to wait until later in the presentation or at the end. It's often questions that get asked that are answered throughout the presentation. And we'll try and answer all the questions this evening. If we're unable to answer all the questions, then what we'll do is we'll publish them and put them on to our frequently asked questions, which again can be found on the Return to School page on the website. I'm not, I think you understand now that we've been in an incredibly difficult time period for all families involved. And we've wanted nothing more than to get our students back when it was safe to do so. I understand that many of you will have concerns or reservations at this stage. And personally, I was in exactly the same position only a few weeks ago, when my wife and I deliberated whether to send my daughter back to preschool. We decided then, yes, and it was absolutely the right decision. We realise now that having the social interaction with their peers is incredibly important for any young person's development. And then obviously just spending time and money, mommy and daddy does get a bit boring after a certain time period. We are deeply concerned for all our students and the time that they've missed in school, but obviously particularly concerned for year 10 and 12, who will be setting exams in some form next year. So on the 24th of May, the Prime Minister announced that secondary schools should plan to reopen. I hate the term reopen. We've never been closed. We've remained open throughout this time period for key workers and vulnerable children. But the Prime Minister directed that we open from the 15th of June for year 10 and 12. He was very clear for once in his instructions that he wanted quarter-year groups and no more than quarter-year groups alongside the key worker and vulnerable group that's in school at the moment for the next five weeks. And they stated that they're asking for us to offer some face-to-face support to supplement the remote education of the students. And that should remain the predominant mode of education during the time that the students are in this year. And they were given some flexibility to implement face-to-face supports in the way that best suited the circumstances of the school and the best interests of the pupils. So we made the decision to survey parents and carers to get an indication of the numbers that wanted to access the provision, so we could maximise the experience that the students could have and maximise the face-to-face contact. And we also had to survey staff at the same time to determine if they were actually able to return, taking into account that some were shielding, some have childcare. So it was an important survey for us to carry out. Before I go into a bit more detail, and an interesting fact that I learnt today is, at the moment in Northamptonshire, we're actually one of the lowest counties in the country for cases and new cases. And there's 202 cases per 100,000, which is 0.2%, which is actually a very, very low rate in which infection is happening. So after surveying parents, carers and our staff as well, we decided on our model. And we've taken approximately sixty year 10s and thirty year 12s each week into two groups, A and B. And we've built in a group C as a contingency for Week Five, where parents or carers may change their minds and decide they want to send their child back into school. We will continue to deliver an online provision, and that is the main diet that we are offering as a school still. And the lessons that are going to happen within school are not something that they'd be able to access at home. So for example, it will be skills-based learning, or exam technique, or extended writing, something that they're not necessarily going to be able to access from home. We're also going to ensure that every student has a one-to-one meeting with a member of SLT to gauge on the learning and their wellbeing. We understand that this could be an overwhelming time, the last ten weeks, and some of our students will have had a very difficult time in dealing with this. So we're going to have a member of our wellbeing team on-site at all times over the course of the next five weeks. This is all taking considerable logistical planning to ensure we provide the best experience in school to supplement the home learning. And our curriculum team have done a huge amount of work behind the scenes in order to structure this. But the home learning does remain the main mode of delivery at the moment. And that's why we have a real structured live lesson timetable now for year 10 and 12 to access at home. We've now received delivery of laptops and dongles from the DFE yesterday, and we've already bought many Chromebooks for year 10 and 12 students. So every student should have now access to internet at home so they can access the online provision. I've got to say that there's no perfect model for bringing the students back into school, and it's very difficult to ensure that everybody is happy about it. Leadership's not about popularity, but it's about doing the right thing. And we believe this model is the right approach to take during this time. But we've also had to plan how to bring the students back safely. And as I said earlier, you should have now had your child's individual timetable and information with further details of the risk assessment and behaviour policy. If you've not had the information, then please contact the school, and we'll ensure that you get that sent to you again. And what I'll say is, I'll start by saying that schools have never closed to protect the children. They've closed to protect the vulnerable and the elderly. Children are simply not affected in the same way as their older generation or vulnerable group are by this virus. However, we have the plan to ensure that transmission between the students and staff is kept to minimum. And we've planned a thorough and detailed risk assessment. We had a full staff inset yesterday, and it's been incredibly positive. The staff have been consulted at every stage of the risk assessment and given opportunities to feedback to ourselves. We've involved SEM, we've involved governors, including parental governors, we've involved the teachers, unions, sites, operations managers, everyone has been involved in ensuring that we get a safe return to the academy. And the site in Admiralty have been working relentlessly to ensure that we are ready for reopening next Monday. The government have guided us on a number of areas to ensure that we minimise risk. And you may be asking questions about guarantees your child will not get COVID if you send them back. That's unrealistic. There's always going to be an element to risk to anything you do. But what we've done is we've tried to minimise that risk as best we can. So I'm going to go through some of the government guidance with you, and what we've done is measures to ensure that we put this into place. Students should be encouraged to walk or cycle where possible. And I would really ask you to support that every stage. They should not be using public transport wherever possible. It's fine for you to bring them in as parents and carers and drop them off. And I'll come back to that later about our facility and how we'll operate that. They were told us not to minimise, or to minimise mixing between different groups of pupils. We've gone one step further. We've put them into groups, and they will not mix between those groups at all. So gone a step above what the government guidance was to ensure the safety of all our students and staff within the school. We'd also, they also expect schools to minimise mixing for arrival, lunchtime breaks and departure. And you'll have seen hopefully from the plan that we have, we've got staggered starts and staggered ends to the day. And there's going to be a huge number of breaks and lunches throughout the day. So there's no more than two groups at any one time who are on break, lunch, fully supervised, who are able to ensure social distancing at all times. They also asked to ensure that sufficient distance between pupils and classrooms, and we've done that. Classrooms will have no more than fifteen students in them. Most are now designed to have ten to twelve students with them, ensuring that we keep optimum distance, two metres in almost every case. And we've ensured as well that we've laid out, and hopefully you've seen in the video, across the academy, a very clear direction where two-metre gap would be as students are moving around. Something that does worry me though, and something I need to sort of talk to you about as parents and carers, that the last two evenings from school, at the end of the day, I've had to go up to our football pitches, artificial football pitches, and large numbers of students, not from our school, may I say, have come on to play together. And ten, fifteen students mixing together, all from different households. And you heard a very nonchalant kind of response, thinking it didn't impact them at all. And it may not impact them directly, but the knock-on effect that can have for their families is huge. So I really, really implore you as parents and carers to ensure that you make sure your child is socially distancing when they come to school, not coming to school in big groups, sharing water, sharing sweets, whatever that may be, but ensuring that they're getting to and from school safely. We'll do everything we can when we're on-site with all these measures to ensure that we have social distancing and hygiene happening within school. It's absolutely vital that your child does not attend school if they have any symptoms. You play such an important role in that, and you must make us aware immediately if that's the case. And the government have advised to clean the hands more often than usual, either washing hands regularly or using hand sanitizer. That's why we've decided to provide a bottle of hand sanitizer for every single student and member of staff that comes into school. And it'll be their own personal bottle of hand sanitizer. There'll be no sharing amongst anybody. They've also asked us to promote the Catch It, Bin It, Kill It, and we've got posters everywhere to remind the students. And we'll be doing a daily PowerPoint in which the students will be reminded about all the good personal hygiene and social distancing. And we've also provided every student and every member of staff a box of tissues in which they can use throughout the time here at the school. The government have also asked that we frequently clean any touch surfaces, and we will be doing that extensively. First thing we've done is we've got wedges on every single door. So doors will not need to be opened and closed, they'll remain open. So students won't need to be, or staff, putting their hands on any door surfaces at all. And we've got, we're only doing the provision from Monday to Thursday for year 10 and 12, which allows us to deep clean every Friday. We will clean thoroughly every single day, and the site team and the cleaning team are on-site to clean throughout regularly. So when your child is on break or lunchtimes, the cleaners will be going in in order to clean down all surfaces within that classroom. So really, as much as we can, we'll be cleaning at every opportunity. We've worked tirelessly to ensure that we can provide a safe and quality experience when your child returns. And hopefully you've had a chance to look through our behaviour policy appendix that's been shared with you at all. And implore you to support us as you always do with this. We want the school to be as familiar as we can. I know that's difficult with the social distancing, but we want the students to get back into the swing of things as quickly as possible. But ultimately, we need the school to be a safe environment for staff, students, which therefore means the risk of transmission is very low, and those students bringing back any transmission back to home. And we need the students to really understand and value their education, which again, we know you have your full support on. And our students do value their education here at the academy. Things that may have seemed insignificant before may now be deemed as a serious breach if it's deliberately breaking social distancing. So I'd ask that you do have a little look through the behaviour policy that's been sent to you and speak to your child before they return next week. Again, we'll do an introduction on Monday when they arrive to talk them through all the new rules. And also we'll do that on a daily reminder, so everybody is absolutely clear how we ensure that everyone is kept safe in the academy. The uniform that we've asked is either twofold. It's either trousers, shirts and shoes, so no tie and no blazer, or the full Northampton Academy PE kit. This will give you an opportunity as parent or carer to wash the clothes when they come back, which follows government guidelines. But what I'd ask for you is we're not looking for a hybrid. We don't want shirts, trousers and trainers. It's shirt, trousers and shoes, please. I don't see it being the other way, where they wear PE kit and shoes, but it needs to be the full uniform, not a hybrid of the two. And we'd ask for your support with that. And we've not changed our stance. We're not looking for false nails, and everything that was banned previously continues to be so from the academy. We're still going to be operating at C here at Take It Policy as well. So mobile phones will not be allowed to be used on-site. And we will take the phones if students are using them. And there's going to be very specific times that you will be able to come in and collect these. So you need to ensure that you counsel your child before next Monday and the importance of them not taking their phone out when they're in school. They're very well versed of this. We've been doing it for several years now. So it's not something that will be unusual or different for them. And we are asking that you, as parents and carers, do not come into the building unless you're invited to do so. We're not trying to be rude or dismissive here, but we must limit the visitors that come into the school at this time, which I'm sure you understand. But we will invite some parents and carers in if it's absolutely urgent for them to do so. And a real key thing that I ask you when you send your child back in from next week, we need you to be highly responsive. We cannot have parents that are not contactable during the day. This puts a health and safety risk on all of us in certain situations. If your child starts to develop symptoms, if there's behaviour issues, if there's first aid issues that aren't related to COVID, we need to be able to get in touch with you immediately. So if you don't feel that you are the right person due to work commitments or whatever that is, then can you please give us a contact that we're able to get directly hold of if there is a situation that arises? Some of you may choose to drop off or pick up, and hopefully you've seen the video yesterday, but we please implore that you stay in your car. Do not come out of your car. You drop your child off in the drop-off zone, as will be indicated, and then you drive away, not to get out of the car, and certainly not to speak to any parents or carers. And we're asking at the end of the day, when you come to pick up your child, please only arrive five minutes before your child's pickup sign, and they're all staggered and finishing time. So we shouldn't have a huge number of cars building up. But please don't park cars and get out and start to speak to each other. We equally understand that coming in is just not possible for some of our students due to them being in the clinically extremely vulnerable category. And that's why our online provision remains the main diet. And this in-school is to supplement that. The government guidance also states that pupils who are clinically vulnerable are only to attend if stringent social distancing can be observed, and the pupil is capable of understanding following these instructions. The decision is going to remain with you as to whether you feel that your child should attend. If you feel your child is able to attend, that is your decision as a parent and carer. And the government guidance also states that pupils who live with someone who is clinically extremely vulnerable or clinically vulnerable should only attend if stringent social distancing can be observed, and the pupil is capable of understanding following instructions. Again, the decision will be down to you as parents and carers whether you want your child to attend. There may be some questions about suspected cases of COVID. So what I've done today is I've put together a kind of step-by-step guide, what will happen in different scenarios. That's on the webpage today in our Return to School, which you'll be able to look at at your convenience. But to be clear, we'll be very open and transparent with you all along the way, as we have been with our staff throughout the planning stage of our wider reopening. And we'll let you know if there's any confirmed cases within the academy. But we'll also let you know if any child within your group develops symptoms anonymously. We feel that's important to do so you can make decisions on your next steps as parents or carers. Before I finish, I think it's important to sort of look moving forward and into the future. And we don't know how long this blended learning is going to continue. The government stated last night that they aimed everyone to return in September. For me, this seems very difficult unless they remove the two-metre social distancing and they put some relaxation on the shielded groups. For example, we wouldn't be able to staff for a start if we still had groups of our staff who were shielding. So we just don't know how long this is going to last for. And in the news, you may have seen the exam boards are now looking to potentially adjust their exams for 2021 to take into account this three-month period. And there's talk of localised lockdowns throughout the year if we get rates of infection within areas. So we've just got lots and lots of unknowns, and we just don't know how it's going to look. It's a great time of uncertainty and one of the most challenging times schools have ever faced. I think at this stage, you'd probably be mad to take up a headship. So yeah, I'm not quite sure what I'm doing in this circumstance by taking up a headship in these circumstances. But it's going to be a challenge for us all. And this uncertainty is not good for you as families either. The uncertainty for parents and carers and our students is terrible. And we all want to have a clear idea of when this will end, but it's an impossible question to answer at this stage. What comfort can you take? And I think, to be clear, all schools and all students across the country are in the same position. And we're incredibly fortunate that our students, over the course of the last three and a half years, have had excellent teaching delivered to them. And this will stand them in excellent stead when it comes to the exams at the end of next year, whatever shape or form they may take. And they've got to understand, the students must understand that their future starts now, and continuing to engage with the home learning in particular is absolutely vital. If they haven't been engaging fully, it's so important that they now re-engage with that, because what they do now will make huge differences. We don't want our students to look back on 2020 as the year that knocked them off the pathway to wherever they wanted to go. I fully understand that much of our community have been adversely affected by this outbreak, and we'll do everything we can as a school to support and build this community back up. I understand that many of you may have experienced loss during this difficult time, and my condolences go out to you, whoever you are. Although we are divided by social distancing at the moment, we are firmly united and are aimed to ensure that your child continues to grow and develop and is ready for the next steps at the end of next year, whether that be going into sixth form, university, or whatever path they have mapped out. I hear and read so many positive stories, and I know that staff, myself included, can't wait for your child to return. And in time when it's safe to do so, the rest of our school community to return too. I hope this, along with all the information we've provided you so far, has really helped you understand that the thought, planning and preparation that we put in to ensure that we provide a safe and purposeful environment when your child returns. And I look forward to along the way to hopefully seeing you again in person as we come out of our lockdown. I think I'll stop there for just now, and I'll bring in Mr Jones to take any questions that have come as I've been talking. And feel free, as I say in the speech bubble that we have on your screen, to type in any questions that you may have now. Mr Jones, have we got any questions that have come through just now?
We have. Mr Klein, there's a couple that are very similar, and I'm happy to answer them. They're about the curriculum. So a couple of questions about why students are not studying certain subjects. That's primarily down to staffing capacity. We don't have enough, say, maths and science teachers to be able to, for everybody to have those lessons. And as Mr Klein said, we're actually keeping the bubbles together for their time, so we're not going to get them to mix, which does, that's a decision we've taken for safety. And that does make things difficult in that we can't give them every subject. But what we have done is we've made sure they've got similar options in their bubbles so that they are experiencing more than, say, just two subjects. What, two more things just to say on that. The online provision continues, which is something that we've worked on very hard in the last two to three months. So that's something I would implore students to continue to use. And you cannot give everyone everything if we are going to maximise the safety while we reopen. So that's what I'd say on that. Unless you wanted to add anything there, Mr Klein?
No, I think I agree there fully with you.
And then another question on what's the year 12 uniform policy, please, Mr Klein?
Yeah, so it'll be similar to staff. The staff one, we've relaxed slightly, and it's smart casual that we're asking staff to wear. So something that they'd be able to wash easily, so that may be chinos and shirts, but something just smart casual is what we'll be looking for year 12s.
Okay. Mr Klein, will you advise parents and carers with children in bubble groups if any students in the bubble have a family member who develops symptoms?
Yeah, so if a student has a family member who develops symptoms, then they will have to self-isolate themselves. So certainly, we have no issues in making parents aware that there is somebody who's self-isolated, but it's not in any way a confirmed case. And those students who start to self-isolate and those family members who develop symptoms will be expected to be tested as per the track and trace. That's on the document I talked about that's been put online about different scenarios if different individuals become infected.
Couple here on lunches. Can children bring bags to put their lunch in?
Yeah, so in terms of the government guidance is very clear, and that's to minimise anything that's coming in or out of sight. So what we've actually done is we've spent, or actually we, our admin team have done an incredible job today. And there's actually 175 plastic wallets sitting next door that contain pens, pencils, graph paper, books, calculators, rulers. So all the equipment is here for the students, and those plastic wallets will remain with that student throughout their time here. So there won't be any need for them to bring in anything in terms of equipment. But absolutely, they can bring lunch in with them. So if they want to have that in a bag and bring the bag in, that's absolutely fine. So our lunch facility is on-site, as information has been said. But students can bring in packed lunches if they feel.
Are you allowed to wear a face mask in school?
Okay, so the guidance is very, very clear from the government at the moment, and they are not recommending the use of any PPE within a school setting. PPE has been advised in situations where social distancing cannot be implemented properly, but certainly very clear in their guidance. And that's a guidance we're following. We're following the government's guidance at the moment, that the face mask should not be worn. We have, if the government changes its minds, to put parents and carers' mind at rest, a large number of PPE in school. But currently, the advice is very clear that face masks should not be worn. And actually, there's further guidance that says people who are unable to use face masks correctly actually increase the risk of transmission. So if students are using it incorrectly. So that's the reason we've decided not to allow the government guidance primarily.
And can they wear a blazer, or is that not at all advised?
No, we'd ask them not to wear the blazer at this stage. The blazer is something that they're unable to machine wash from understanding. So we'd ask not to wear blazers at this stage.
And the letter we have received only has two weeks. Is that correct? I presume that's, yeah, they are going to come in just for two weeks. So one group will be in on the 15th of June for Monday to Thursday, and then they'll be back in on the 29th of June. And that's just following government guidelines in terms of numbers that were allowed in the building. We're only allowed a quarter of our year group, which is 60 children. So that's why that is. So that is correct, yes. Couple here that I'll ask. I have asked for additional help for my son, who has really struggled with maths. Will progress be assessed at the time of the one-to-one with the SLT member?
Yeah, so the one-to-one is a kind of hybrid discussion around both academics and also wellbeing as well. So that's an area we'll be able to tease out any issues that students have had with home learning as well. So absolutely, yes.
Can I refill water bottles?
Water fountains will be shut off in the school. So we would ask, my understanding is that they can get the water, bottles of water with the packed lunches, when they order them from the school, or bring plenty of supply of water in with them. But we've had to shut off the water fountains for obvious reasons during this next five weeks.
Someone just wants a quick reminder, Chris, on the uniform requirements for year 10, if that's okay.
Okay, so uniform requirements for year 10. They'll either wear school uniform minus a tie and a blazer. a tie and a blazer, so that'd be the trousers or skirts if it's females, or shirts and shoes, black polishable shoes, or they can wear full Northampton Academy PE kits.
One here on an outside coat, I'm sure they're allowed to bring a coat, is that right?
Yeah.
Is there any facility available for year 12s to study on-site after attending a lesson in the common room or in the library?
No, no, the idea is they come in and they work in the same classroom at all times, so they'll come in, they'll do their lessons, and then they'll leave site. Our sixth form area has been used currently for our provision for our key workers and vulnerable children anyway.
Another one from year 12 here, that I think's worth asking off the back of that, can year 12 students take in their school bag with their subject books in?
That is, that's a good question. Is Mrs Rugby on this call as well? Maybe something she wants to come in with.
Yeah, I think it's absolutely fine, Chris. I think that's not a problem, but they must take them away with them at the end of each day.
Yeah.
My child has a toilet pass, will that still be able to be used?
Yeah, so we understand that students will have toilet passes, but what we're asking in this situation, we're going to have SLT that are going to be very prominent around the school, and we're going to be escorting students to and from the toilets for obvious reasons. But yeah, absolutely, the toilets will remain open all day on site. And hopefully you've seen through the video, we've ensured within the toilets that we have colour-coded bubbles so that there's no sort of cross-mix in between the groups.
Okay, I mean, there's a similar question here at the bottom, but I think we've kind of already answered that, what are year 12s allowed to bring in, if anything? And we've said they can bring a bag in with books, that's fine.
Yeah, all their equipment will be provided.
Yeah. Okay, that's all the questions, I believe, Mr Klein. Oh, there's one here, ah, okay, can you let us know if children are going to be in trouble for haircuts that are shorter than normal following lockdown?
Short, what, in terms of they've shaved their hair off, then not at all. I've had a terrible Corona cut myself a few weeks ago, so I understand that there might be a few anomalies.
So that'll be okay?
Yeah, look, we'll be sensitive to that there have been certain issues potentially in the previous weeks, okay?
Someone said here, can we please have another town hall in a couple of weeks' time just to see how things are going?
Absolutely, I think that's a good idea, and more than happy to do one in a couple of weeks.
And someone said, can they bring a school book? I think that's something else to say, in terms of the equipment, we will be providing exercise books, paper, graph paper and all sorts of things like that. Really, if you want to bring a lunch, bring a lunch, but apart from that, everything else will be sorted for you this end. There's just one more. Yeah, can my son bring in bottles of water? Absolutely. We encourage you to bring fluids in just with the water fountains that are not here, not available, okay? And a couple of thank yous, so thank you for that, appreciated. And that's all the questions, Mr Klein, at the moment.
Okay, well, I just want to say another thank you for all your support. We've been overwhelmed by the positive response from our community during this difficult time. Wish you all well, and hopefully we'll speak soon. If not before, certainly I'll do another town hall in two weeks' time, but we'll write to you to make you aware of the time and date of that.
Mr Klein, just a couple of questions coming in at the last minute. Mr Jones?
Yeah, someone's put that don't have school shoes at the moment and afraid they're going to have to wear trainers.
Yeah, look, we'll deal with each case by case on an individual basis, okay?
Yeah, I think that's the main thing here, a couple of uniform issues coming in just around, I don't have school joggers, can I wear blue joggers?
If that's part of PE kit, then yes.
And reading books, do they have to take in their reading books?
No, absolutely not, absolutely not.
I'll take this one, please, can we continue with the live lessons? Yes, is the simple answer to that, and the programme is expanding as well, we've listened to feedback from the parents and the staff are becoming much more confident delivering that way, so that programme will continue and increase.
Okay, well, thank you again, and I wish you all a pleasant evening, take care and speak soon.